It'll be awesome. It'll be a good one.
Yeah.
Beginning, we'll start with a prayer followed by the pledge. Father God, we turn to you this morning. We thank you for the blessings of life you've shared with us until now, and we're mindful of those less fortunate than us, and we pray you would just direct us this day as we make decisions for the county. Granted, it's wisdom that we could do what would be pleasing in your sight and be able to protect our land, those that wear a uniform and carry a badge. We pray you would watch over them and keep them safe. I did this prayer, we pray in Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Minutes. Everybody received minutes of the email. Any corrections? If not, only not paying the motion to accept it.
Motion to approve.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
The second payroll for calendar year 2016 was $211,678.42. We had a total claims of 154 with the amount of $221,481.67.
Motion to approve payroll and claims.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Three, zero. All right. Monty, your personal agenda.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We have eighty-five inmates, nine are DOC. We were a little busy this weekend with the ICE we ended up having. Had County Highway come out and did a good job of solving, but before they got out, we had several PD accidents. And one of our vehicles was one of them early Friday morning, Saturday mornings, Friday night. Not too bad, just tore some exhaust off.
Went down a road or a place they...
Well, he was trying to stop on 300 north of the railroad tracks and slid off and took a couple saplings out.
Those are all accidents.
Yeah, that's what it are.
Thanks, Monty.
Okay, have a good day.
Thank you. Ed?
I have no report. Alls I have is that utility request that Toby gave you.
Okay.
A request for utilities, that's for a burial directional bore from Adams Wells. It's in the, what's the addition?
In skip addition. Skip addition.
And it goes along County Road 100 south into that subdivision. And he just needed that permission to do that, and I'm okay with it, so.
So a motion to accept it?
Well, Adams Wells telecom to bury fiber and directional bore along 866 East 100 South.
So moved.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. And the only other thing is, like I mentioned, in regards to our road conversion paperwork.
Right.
There was one thing I told you to add, and I think I have one other thing written down at home, but
Okay.
let's get maybe that something we can finalize for the February first meeting.
Okay.
At least we can get underway now that we know funding is going to be there.
We'll be heading down to Road Funding Day on the 25th at the State House. And I think that what we're looking at right now is some conversions based on the fact that we, in theory, should be receiving some money back that is already ours, but... So we've asked Ed to look into some of the previous applications of conversions on roads, so he'll be doing that.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Anything else? Nothing? Okay. Chad, our new director. Hello, Chad.
Obviously, mostly coming here as a formal introduction, even though I've met every one of you. I don't know if you remember meeting me or not, but at the caucus meeting. But just a kind of, again, a formal introduction as your new economic development director here in Wells County. Couple things that we've been working on is kind of looking at the board. Some of the, we've made a few changes in regards to some representation. We had a vacancy in a real estate position, and we've changed that to now be a manufacturing and industry-specific position. So we did that, that was formalized this morning, so we'll be seeking somebody from manufacturing to sit on the ED Council to hopefully be able to provide some insight from the manufacturing side. There will be a survey hopefully going out, should be going out by the end of this week, to assess current jobs, current job openings, number of other things related to workforce needs, skills needs, those types of things, so that we can start putting together some training programs to be able to provide incumbent worker training and those types of things through the county. So hopefully, we should get some of those responses back fairly soon. I have a meeting set up with Work One the first part of February to start working on getting some grant funding to be able to put some programs on, so.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Education's a big deal, so we need to work on that. Appreciate your initiatives taking
No problem.
Taking that by the reins.
Anybody have any questions? We're working on a few, have a few things, business-wise that we're still working on. Hopefully, we can see some come into town, some stuff that started before me, but hopefully, we can get it finished.
Stay in touch.
Yep, thanks.
Thanks, Chad. Appreciate it. Michael, you are next on the list.
Good morning.
Morning.
Here in front of you to ask to join the Permitting Excellence Coalition. That's part of the High Performance Government Network through the Northeast Indiana Regional Partnership. It's basically an organization that brings together several permitting agencies, planning and building-wise, Northeast Indiana to basically quarterly meetings where compare and contrast the different policies and procedures that each one of the agencies has to try to work towards a way of making everybody function as best as they can in Northeast Indiana. As one of the highlight notes that the regional partnership put together is that developers have to have a clear and precise knowledge of what it takes to get an approval, what they'll be asking for, and what paperwork and things would be needed for them. So this is basically our step to join up. There is an initial joining fee of $2,000 that we'd have to come up with to make that happen. That covers some of the initial things that the partnership provides to us so that we can be up to speed with the rest of the organizations. And that buying price is actually down quite a bit from what it was initially when we talked about it maybe a couple years ago.
What, they won originally, five grand?
It was five.
So I thought.
Yeah.
I know I balked at that one.
And I, and they came up with some additional funding on the back end to help pay for new people to come on board, so they...
So the funding is the county's responsibility, so
Yeah.
would Austin be included in that, and the city of Bluffton?
Right now, we would be entered in as Wells County, specifically the planning department. So any of the people that we work with would
Is it possible the city would have to, Bluffton and Austin being?
If the city of Bluffton's building department wanted to be part of it, they'd have to join it separately.
Gotcha.
That's how they're viewing it. But our organization can join it, and then anybody that participates through the planning side of things would be...
Have they shown an interest either the city of Austin or Bluffton?
We've talked with Ted with Bluffton a little bit about it, and he has interest in seeing what's going on as well with it, so he may
Initially, weren't we the only one that wasn't part of it?
There's a
See you shaking your head.
Was Noble County did not contribute.
Yeah, there were, there were a few that didn't, and there's a, I was able to go to one of the meetings, this last quarter meeting that they had, and it was definitely a benefit to talk to the other agencies that were there and see what they did. They basically said, "Everybody go out and we're going to have this type of petition where a new warehouse wants to come into the community. What does it look like? How do they get permitted and permissions through each jurisdiction?" And it was interesting to see what different avenues everybody looked at through that process to see if there was a better way of doing it, or some...
Try to get a uniform standard?
It's not necessarily about making it uniform, but just making sure that everybody has the same basic features available. So part of it is to assess the website to make sure that we've got everything that they want to see out there. It doesn't mean that it has to happen the exact same way in every community, but that when somebody comes in, they see, "This is how you start, this is the procedure, and this is how you finish." Whether it's the same as another county or not, that's not necessarily the goal.
I guess the question I have again
Yeah.
would be, over the years, anytime anyone has ever contacted us about a commercial, we'll call it building inspector. Of course, we did not have one as such, and so you're looked at in Wells County like, "What's going on?" Now, this doesn't really have a bearing on what we're doing right here, but in the, just as a footnote, whenever someone builds in Wells County with no inspections, they look at you like, "Why not?"
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I think
We do have to regularly provide letters to banks and other entities explaining that we don't have building inspection.
Right, right. I guess, Michael, I still am not sold on this, that we couldn't go get this information from other sources to do that, I guess, and I know in the past, there's always been pushback on building inspector for Wells County.
Yeah.
I guess I would rather
The one thing I would say that this program, the number-one group of people that are participating is the planning in that side, not there's actually fewer building departments that are part of it than there are the planning organizations. So it was, when I went to the meeting, I was hearing what the planning
As planners.
As planners, what we were doing with that, with our permitting side.
Do you see this as just the, basically, an initiation fee, and then there'll be regular fees after?
No, as of right now, this is just the one-time introduction. There's some basic review stuff.
For future, basically.
I had that conversation with them, and they verified that there isn't anything in the future.
I don't know if I'm ready to act on it.
Okay.
I mean, I'd rather think about it. I don't want to push you off, but
No, that's fine.
I guess I still have not
Have they given you a deadline when they would like to have every
No, it's
county reply?
They're, they're just reaching out to the people that showed an initial, me and Blake sat at a meeting, maybe their first one or second one they had.
That was one of my first meetings. I learned a lot. I sat with Mayor Yoder and his city utility manager and Huntington person. And I learned a lot, just the difference, how each one does it so uniquely different.
I think it seems like a good idea to get together with other people, but I don't know that paying $2,000 just to have permission to do that seems to be the most cost-effective way to do it.
The $2,000 covers the review of the website and some other features to get us to where the other communities are.
There's nothing inside your own organization that allows for this without coming to the commissioners to ask for it? If you wanted to spend it on that?
Inside our budget?
Yeah.
Your area plan doesn't have
No, we don't have
a line item or anything.
This is one of the problems with budgeting in June, is that when somebody contacts you in August about something, you can't do anything.
All right.
I think it could help, but that's just where I'm at. I don't know if it's worth a one-time and see what we get for our money, or it's one of those things to just see what transpires of the communities that do participate. I don't know.
Want to ask some more questions of some people?
Sure, that's fine.
Thank you.
If you want me to come back next meeting or whatever, that'd be fine.
Give me a month.
A month?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Say, yeah, let's go to the end of February's meeting and give us a little time to research.
Yeah, we'll reach out to some more people up in the, out of the region up there and
Yeah, no problem.
Do that, see what you come up with.
No problem at all.
Next month.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Next, Blake Poydexter. You are next.
Good morning. How are you all doing on this rest of day?
That was unison.
Trying to paint a better picture than what it feels like. To the end before you, we have the annual, or we're now going back to an annual grant with DOC. They had done a biannual grant with a mid-fiscal in the two-year process before, after the 1006 Part B legislative piece last session last year. They decided to go back to an annual grant process. So since I've started, we've done annual grants, biannual grants, and now we're back to annual grants. The cycle continues. Some of the headwinds that we are facing, and Monty and I have talked about, have been the services at the jail. With the moratorium as of January 1st on F-6 felonies being able to be sent to the Department of Corrections, we're going to have to house those folks locally. What we're trying to avert is overcrowding at the jail by using community corrections and probation to keep those numbers in check. The one thing that's going to happen with this, it's up to two and a half years for an F-6 felony now that can be held in incarceration. That means we have the potential of six months, or, you know, two or three months, up to a year and a half, year and three-quarter for somebody to be held in our jail. If that's the case, we have to have base services, and Blake met with me last week about the GED. 1995, there was a federal lawsuit against all counties in the state of Indiana that did not provide GED services. We averted that lawsuit because I was working on our first program back in 94, and we were launching latter half 95. So we were exempted out of that civil action due to the fact we had something in progress. Kevin probably remembers that from back in the day. So that is something we do have to provide, and we do provide, so we're in compliance on that. The cognitive programming section is the other piece that we brought in in the last four or five years to our people in probation, home detention outside of the jail, and we've now extended it to the jail. So we're providing those services for the jail folks. The, this Thursday, Karen Thompson, Jail Commander Thompson, are meeting with Jean Bell, Pastor Bell, to try to get NA meetings at the jail. So we're trying, since we're holding a lot more of these drug issues. The one cognitive program that we're focusing on right now is Prime for Life. Prime for Life is being received very well by the inmates in the jail. They're all responding. It deals with how they work through the addiction cycle, where they're at on the acceptance of what they're doing and how it's affecting them. And we're trying to make sure that we give them some tools, so when they do get released from the jail and they go out to probation or they have a split sentence with jail and home detention, we can follow up with them on home detention or community corrections with Prime for Life outside the jail, so they can transfer over for probation in us. That is giving us a lot more flexibility. We still do the Thinking for Change program. That's a 26-week closed program. The one frustration with a closed program is we cannot put people in once we start a class. The Prime for Life is an open enrollment, so we can bring people in as we move along, and it's got that flexibility, and it works more for our numbers. DOC regulates all these programs under standards and practices for evidence-based practices. I'm sure you guys have been inundated the last couple of years with evidence-based practices. We've been getting this since 1996, so this is something that we've been working on for quite a long time with DOC, and we've been compliant with. If you look at the grant, the, there's $31,000 in new money asked for, and those are for F-6 compliance issues. Computer technology, copier, scanner, materials for Prime for Life program. Let's see, I'm trying to think. $12,000 for monitoring fees for F-6 felonies to offset those folks we're getting out of jail that we need to find employment for. We've been doing very good on that front. I place anywhere in a given week, one to six or seven people in jobs. So, you know, I've got somebody that was transferred out of jail, back to home detention Sunday, and today, we're working on getting them a job with one of our manufacturers here in town. So, you know, we do that routinely every day. Someone comes in and says, "Hey, I lost my job." We get on the horn, and I start calling the HR and plant managers I know and say, "Hey, do you have anything for this person? They have these skill sets." So that's something that we've always done and we're continuing to do. Other than that, we have not heard anything out of legislation this session of what's being done with Criminal Justice Section. It's been kind of quiet. Makes me a little cautious when they get this quiet, because I never know if there's going to be something sprung on us mid-session at the tail end of filings. So other than that, that's where we're at with everything. We've been working with the advisory board, the courts, prosecutor's office, probation sheriff, and defense attorneys on trying to make sure we're in compliance and meeting all the needs as stated for, and I have a letter coming. I forgot my letter for the grant. So we've been working on making sure we're in compliance with all those statutory requirements. The one new wrinkle in the system for the courts and criminal justice is the state is regulating basically all aspects of what we do. They're wanting to know more and more and more what's going on day-to-day. We do daily data dumps to Department of Correction, weekly data dumps, monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual. And they get all our information that we put into our case management software system on what we're doing statistically from day-to-day. So they're, the legislature's really monitoring what's going on with the implementation of the new criminal code changes. So they make sure that they've got it right, or if they haven't, they can adjust it.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many individuals go through the GED program anymore? Because I never hear anything about it.
Well, and that's been a problem. In the last year, we're switching, switching over from being pulled out to DOC to being held locally. Tina and I met last week because we've got nine requests for participation in GED preparatory classes. Before they were all waiting, before January 1st, they were all waiting to see if they got pulled into DOC. Now that the first has come and gone, and they realize that they're probably staying, they're going, "Sign me up." So, you know, that's, that is one thing that we're waiting. Landscape has been shifting an awful lot in the last two years with the new criminal code, and with these staggered implementations, it's been more of a headache. It would have been cleaner if they would just said, "Okay." The ban on F-6 felonies would have all been, boom, with the code changes, we could have all adjusted in a six-to-eight-month period. And by now, we have been leveled out. So, but we have had nine requests, and I'm sure that's going to grow, because I know the sentencing's we have coming up for folks out of circuit and some superior court F-6 felonies. I almost said D-felonies, I'm sorry. I bounce between the old system and new system sometimes, I apologize. We're looking at those folks staying longer in the jail, and that's something Monty and Karen and I have been really working on to make sure that they meet the standards. They have to for the jail inspector and their side of the state, and that we can provide that form at the most efficient cost factor that we can. Because if you tried to subcontract this out, bring somebody in, they're going to charge you rather handsomely for the service. And an education program that I have somebody who has a PhD and is a certified teacher, it's a lot cheaper for us to do it than to hire it out.
Do you think that we have two that graduate a year?
Well, that's the other problem. Well, that's the other problem, Kevin. The way they change, they've really got this whole GED system upside down anymore. When I started doing the GED back in 95, we were able to do the testing onsite at the jail.
Right.
We were certified. They shifted during the Daniels administration, they shifted GED from the adult, adult basic ed division over to workforce development. Now, they've kinda got it in both realms. So, we've got two separate agencies that have different aspects. To do the test, you have to go to a secure testing site for the GED that they designate, and I think Ivy Tech, and there's one other place in Fort Wayne where it's like you're taking a college admittance test because it's got the cameras, the one point of entry, all that, which is kind of not conducive for the people we're trying to reach. One, the transportation up to Fort Wayne. Two, you know, they're making it so rigid that it probably discourages a lot of the folks that are embarrassed when they didn't have their high school diploma, and they're later in life, and they're trying to get their GED, and they've gotta go through this.
Mm-hmm.
Eye of security.
Yeah, and it just kind of, I think it heightens the anxiety, and that's some of the problems we're seeing with the GED test participation side of it. But, you know, I've got employers more and more saying, no GED, we can't hire you. So, that is helping us out on the backside. You know, the employment market is saying, you gotta have the minimum of that GED. So, we're working with our offenders to say, okay, we'll get you there, and we'll help you get to that point and give you the confidence that you need, but, you know, it all, it all eventually rests on you doing it, just like getting somebody to stop committing crimes against the community. It eventually comes down to them to make that final choice, that they wanna change, be a better person, and become a productive citizen instead of a drain on our system and county. So, it's all in flux. I'm hoping that maybe in a year or two here, everything will settle out. We aren't causing such catastrophic changes in systems, and everyone can get a baseline to what they're doing. You know, we were all not happy when they said they were gonna rewrite the criminal code because we knew it was gonna be a five-year, six-year period for them to find out what they missed when they wrote it, go back and make the fixes subsequently, and unfortunately, those fixes don't come as quick as the initial rewrite. So...
Is this all free to the inmate?
Yes.
I'm all about education, but I got a real problem with that. The fact that they open it up to people, but then they, on the backside, the different things they're putting on these individuals causes their anxiety, but I guess the problem I have is the fact they're already incarcerated.
Yeah.
And why are we paying it? I know it's been that way for years, but, you know.
We need to relook at some of the stuff that...
Yeah, and here I...
We were, we were charging for the GED.
That's what I thought.
But, people are saying, I just don't have the money, and there's been some suits filed about barriers to access because of financial issues. So, it's...
It's counterproductive. If paying for them to get it keeps them in a job and keeps them out of the system, then yes, it is.
Long run.
But if they come right back, what are the studies? How do they prove that?
What's the recidivism?
Blake and I were talking about the recidivism last week, and that's kinda like, and Kevin will probably echo this, we've, they've been talking about how do you predict a recidivism model for... The problem we get into is, most of these folks move around, they're very mobile, they're nomadic, and under constitutional rights, after you're done with home detention, jail, DOC, probation, we have no purview to follow you because your right to privacy. So, that kinda hinders that recidivism model, because, you know, if they go over line in Ohio and do something, we may not see it in the criminal history if it's not entered. And, you know, there's a lot of different systems that don't mesh. That's the other downside to the criminal justice system. There's a lot of different jurisdictional systems that we don't have one unified computer database that pulls it all in so we can see in a snapshot, or if, where they are, there's a limited access, and only the prosecutor can have it or the courts, and it's, it's just a headache because the one thing I've always argued with them is, recidivism sounds great, but the devil's always in that detail of how you figure out how you're gonna calculate it, measure it, and what variables you're gonna include in it. The current models they're using are not accurate models, but to do what we need to do is gonna be considered intrusive and go beyond the purview of the court orders for their participation in the criminal justice system. So, it's kind of catch 22 on that side. I know they're working on it in the legislature. I'm waiting for them to tell us because about the time, we used to try to do it locally, and then they go, well, no, we don't like that. Okay, tell us what you want us to use, and make it a standardized uniform for all jurisdictions to use, and that's what we're waiting on currently.
Thanks. I guess my, my whole thing is, when I looked at your budget, I would just like to see less county general money used in your department, and I'm not sure how that can be accomplished.
Well, in the last four years, I've brought it down $85,000.
Well, your budget's come down, but the general fund...
On the general fund. That was all general fund side, I brought that down.
I think this, I think this go-around went up a little bit, so...
And quite honestly, I know that a lot of folks, and Kevin, I'm not sure what you're hearing around the state, but counties are having, because now Community Corrections has been mandated as one of the options to bring the F-6 felons back to the counties, they're all having to put money towards the effort as well because the state is basically saying misdemeanors and F-6 felonies are a local issue. They're your problem. And the legislature's pretty much decided, that's when I urge you, talk to your representatives, talk to your senator, say, hey, guys, you know, if you're gonna do this, what's the backside relief coming from the state to help localities out? And that's where I think...
That topic is on our mayor's commissioners.
Mm-hmm.
Form, I think one of the three or four items we have, so...
Aye.
And you need from us today, what?
A motion to approve the grant, and I've got a letter so we can email that down to DOC and get that filed. We have to have it on file by, by or before the 31st of the month here so that we can get our next continuation.
All three signatures required?
Yeah.
And the grant application is just a general, it's not, doesn't have a specific name?
No, it's, it's, oh gosh, they went to all electronic and we're waiting on them to unlock it from DOC's central office so we can print a hard copy to put in PDF form, and it's just the Community Corrections Grant Application is what they titled it.
Okay, so, motion to approve the Community Corrections Grant Application and to be signed by all.
You have a motion? Hold on a second.
And Blake, you, you sat in and met with the judge and...
I had a conversation with Kirko, and I would, I'm gonna try to make an appointment sometime this week with Antrim.
Okay.
And kinda get an understanding of what happens from the sentencing I just received this, this morning here. Adult criminal charges filed in calendar year 2015 was 1,052, which was up 126 individuals from calendar year 2014, which was down about 50, so... Drug charges up 100, went from 61 to 169, so we have an issue out there with illegal substances, so...
These are rolling up your F-6 felonies.
Well, the, the new criminal code, a lot of those drug charges have gone down to misdemeanor.
Okay.
But with the fix they're talking about for possibly might, maybe too far down on the scale, is gonna put them in the F-6 bracket so they're still gonna stay local. One thing that Blake and Tamara and Kevin, you and I have had a conversation on is the mental health aspect that we're dealing with right now in our department of probation and Sheriff's Department is, we have a lot of mentally ill people that are self-medicating, which is exacerbating that increase on drug charges because they don't have the money or they don't wanna go to the doctor. They'll use heroin, they'll use meth, they'll use marijuana. I've, I've had some folks over the last six months that, we had one person that was using spice laced with meth and heroin. You know, how do you fight that? I, I'm just, there's some days I'm, I'm not sure what to do next.
Let's, let's get together maybe midsummer and try to get some heads...
Handled on it.
Yeah, try to get our hands around it to some, some degree.
Yeah.
So, we're not duplicating efforts where somebody else is doing...
Right. Part of the state, part of the state grant is that we, we are not allowed to duplicate services from anyone else in the county. We also have a collaboration plan that we have filed between probation and Community Corrections, Sheriff's Department, so the state has...
Well, I'm not saying duplicate, but it's things that are so close that you can say they're different, but in essence, you're trying to accomplish the same feature.
Well, DOC and the legislature's already regulated us on that, so that's, that's part of the initiative of the evidence-based practices.
So, I have a motion and second, on favor?
Aye.
Spice, meth and unsorts. Nice.
No, it's, it's not dull day-to-day in our office on what we see anymore, that's for sure.
No. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks Blake for supporting.
Dick, you are next.
It's cool now.
I've tried to make this as brief as I could, but yet comprehensive enough that we've got one person.
Tried to bring snow back, it didn't work. It's on the back of my pickup truck.
I'd like to show you. Come on now. I've got one additional document for you, and I've had a lot of conversations regarding this issue, but I thought at least I could do what I could to bring that to date on.
Thank you.
And whatever you'd like to talk about first, let me know.
Let's just start with the comp, workman's comp.
The workman's compensation comes up 2-1. There's not a great deal of surprises. Page one simply gives you an index. Page three, I guess, will provide you with some details as to how the premiums are computated from year to year. Please note at the bottom under total payroll that the payroll was increased from 4.9 million to 5.2, and this was as a direct result of an audit done in the past year between the 14 and 15 policy year. They simply updated the payrolls based on that audit. So, accordingly, the one, the one issue that I can't, that I do not have an answer, under attorneys, went from approximately 200,000 to almost 500,000. And I'll have to, I don't know whether we've hired some outside public defenders. Roy, would you have any idea on that? Have we, have we contracted outside...
Circuit court contracted public defenders for, I think, for juvenile, juvenile pellet work at least? I know that...
That was the only new one, yeah.
Well, he asks if there've been any new ones.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was saying, that's the only new one I have.
The equivalent to the number 300,000?
No.
Well, that was the most significant increase in our payrolls in reviewing. Some went down, some went up a little bit, and we'll, we'll cover the other areas regarding that. Now, down below is a computation on how we derive the premiums and the discounts and so forth. There's, there's a total of $35,000 being discounted on the premiums. Part of it is in part because of our safety record. Part of it is, is because we've been with By2 Minutes for a number of years, it significantly helps. The coverage from work comp from carrier to carrier is identical in the state of Indiana. There is no deviation on it. Some companies are now beginning to entertain deductibles and so forth, but there's been no change as far as coverages. But in any case, the experience mod, if you look under, there's an asterisk there, went from .95 to .93, which gives us a little bit of an additional credit. Page four, I think, is, is quite explanatory. I give you the rates as provided by the Indiana State Workers' Compensation Bureau, and you'll see the 15, 16 rates versus the 16, 17 rates. Now, in most cases, you see those rates are significantly going up. We have nothing to do with deriving those rates. I will note down under attorneys, and I'll do this for Mr. Johnson's benefit, that only went up a penny. Your clerical rates are very low in comparison, 16 cent, what, you're gonna get a paper cut? You know, something of that nature. Item five, or page five, simply shows the increase. The premium went from $69,658 to $71,519, or approximately a 2.6% increase. We don't like increases, but due to the variation of, of medical costs and so forth, we do see this. I'll give you a little additional information down below as far as the mod. I, I wanna correct myself, the mod did go up two points. The .95 indicates that we're 5% below our peer group in rates. In comparison to last year, we were 7% below. Page six, seven, eight is nothing more than basic information that we provided already. It's a copy of the renewal policy and so forth. Nine, 10. Items 11 through the balance of this shows the experience and the losses. And the modification, that 5% was determined by activities of two years ago. So, you'll see the cost, you see the accident date, you see the cost, and anything that's Page 12, there's $16,000, $24,000 worth of losses in that particular page alone. There are some checks and balances, and at page 13, you'll see one there that occurred back in 13, $31,000. But I try to provide that information so you have a working knowledge of at least what takes place. And as commissioners, I think that's important at least to have some indication, some idea of what, what we pay out in, in benefits. If you have any immediate questions, again, there will be an audit probably in the next 60 to 90 days for the 15, 16 policy year.
So, Dick, we're just looking 1861 increase, correct?
Yes.
On the premium?
Yes.
I would make the motion to approve the 71, 519 for work comp for this year.
Motion, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Zero.
Somebody gonna follow through about the discrepancy and the difference of the attorney?
Thank you.
It's probably right.
Yeah.
It just feels wrong to begin with.
I was gonna say, 199 seemed low, and this seems high, but it's a side-by-side.
Yeah.
Dick, is that attorney number included in prosecuting attorney's office?
Pardon?
Well, I'm just saying, just with our public defender that we have, our three public defenders that we have on contract, and then you add the juvenile public defender in it, and maybe the attorney fees that we pay for, you know, just all the commissioners, we're not gonna get too far off of that number, so if they audit it, that's probably where they come up with it. So, I don't think that's too far off. So, I don't think that's too far off.
The checks and balances, the checks and balances in the system is when they do audit, if they find errors, or if the payroll has been reduced, or is there significant changes, it, it comes back to you in a form of credit.
Yeah.
And you eventually. That is the lowest percents, 14 or 15 cents, that is the lowest in the category.
Well, the attorneys have some advantage because they monitor this stuff.
Sit behind the desk, no. These occupy, so.
Um, the other document, we've had an awful lot of, um, conversations, discussions regarding, um, cemeteries.
Yes, actually, Ken, I think just walked in, so.
Yes, and he and I had a conversation again this morning. We take, we took it upon ourselves several years ago to add an endorsement to the county's policy, and it's, I think it's referred to as emergency services and governmental property extension endorsement. What you have is page 11 of that particular endorsement, and it, it basically says that we have $25,000 per occurrence and $50,000 per any one policy year for grave markers, um, and, uh, what is it, stones?
Headstones.
Headstones. But I think there's a key here, and again, I'm not an attorney, but basically, that first, that first line says, you, if you are a governmental entity, you may extend the insurance provided by this coverage form to apply to direct physical loss or damage to grave markers and headstones not owned by you at a designated premises. I think that's the key here. I've had discussions with the insurance company. Now, accordingly, designated premises. The Murray Cemetery was not.
Describe premises.
Describe premises. Um, was not listed on the policy because we had no idea how many cemeteries, or if the county does indeed order, you know, have the responsibility of cemeteries. So, the, basically, the insurance company said, present a claim and let us decide. We've had some dialogue with Goodman Cemetery about, or Goodman's Funeral Home about the markers and so forth. I have been out to the cemetery. Um, in my mind, there certainly was some vandalism done out there. I did talk to the sheriff about it, it has been reported. Um, I have no indicator, this has been my first experience with cemetery coverages and damages in 48 years, so I don't have any specific answers for you on this.
Was this a, a special endorsement?
Yes.
And when was that taken out?
Two or three years ago.
And were we supposed to describe the cemetery if we wanted that coverage?
It, it's, it's an endorsement with a number of issues in it, outside fences, uh, outside properties and so forth. No, it was not, it was in my, based on my recollection, there was no discussion whatsoever on it. There's been some discussion on setting up some type of a committee to review this, and with your assistance, we, apparently based on the documents that you turned over, the county is responsible for that particular cemetery and possibly others.
So, why does it say, "Not owned by us, but we do own them"? What does that mean?
I, I believe they're referring to the grave markers and headstones.
We wouldn't own the marker, but we'd own the cemetery.
Strange wording.
It's, well, legalese.
And I think you said something to the effect that we have to decide whether we want to even put a cemetery commission together to have them deliver it to.
Well.
I thought we had to.
You may appoint a cemetery commission. I mean.
Where do we want to be, the cemetery commission?
Well, our most, I mean, I mean, these documents go back into the 1830s, that's how far we're talking back, so, um, do most townships in the state have total responsibility of cemeteries, or do we know of other comm, county commissioners that actually regulate and have county-owned cemeteries?
Noble County own any cemeteries? Did you do that? I didn't think so, no.
Do they want one?
Or two? It's about like owning property.
Well. You, you, you have a problem when, uh, you know, they, they pass, uh, the legislature adopts laws.
Use the word forever.
That, uh, well, this, you know, I don't know how far this goes back, but the, the Cemetery Association, or the Cemetery Act, I guess, says 1997. Now, I don't, I don't know if that was just recodified or where the law goes back, but, you know, we're talking about, you know, two cemeteries, and, and this is the township trustee, thank you very much for, you know, all the work. Uh, but, uh, you know, a deed to, uh, the Murray Cemetery, you know, you know, you know you're talking about a long time ago, when it's not even a numbered deed book, but A or B, D? This is.
Yes.
Deed book D, and it's all, uh.
Handwritten?
Looks like 1850. And then the Old Bluffton Cemetery, I, I kind of think that's even worse because, uh, I think the, the county might have gotten, you know, like 80 acres or something from, I don't know, maybe Abraham Studebaker himself, maybe, but the Old Bluffton Cemetery, uh, according to the, the records here, uh, was Commissioner's Record Book A, pages 118 to 119, on March 2, 1841, where one of the items of the commissioners was, they appointed, uh, uh, they appointed a person to, uh, report back, and they planted the Old Bluffton Cemetery. So, you know, a long time ago, the county, the county commissioners came into ownership of two cemeteries. What I was aware of before, from, from private practice, I had, over the years, I'd had some people come and said, you know, we've got this, there's a cemetery, or, it, it wasn't Lancaster, but another township, I think Nottingham, maybe, what are we supposed to do? And I knew there was a statute that said, unfortunately, the township trustees are, we can't, become responsible for cemeteries that aren't being properly maintained, you know? If, if these cemeteries, presumably they're old, and, and they're, and the plots are all sold, and, and whatever proceeds have, are long gone, and no one's there to maintain them, and the, and the state law makes the township trustee responsible for that. On the other hand, we're talking about two cemeteries that clearly the county owns, and there is a statute with respect to care of cemeteries by counties. And, and that's the statute that says the commissioners may appoint a cemetery commission. And I think, like most questions, it probably comes down to, uh, cost, you know? So, you know, it talks, you can, you can set a tax base of not, to exceed 50 cents on each hundred dollars of assessed valuation. So, uh, someone's gotta pay for the care. If, if the trustee, I mean, you, you have budgets, and so you have to figure in costs for the cemeteries you maintain.
We have a contract for mowing.
Right, I mean, but, but you've got, you've got some costs there that you have to figure into your, and I, I don't know that it's necessary to say, well, uh, the, the county do nothing, and thereby, because the county's not doing its responsibility, it refers to the township trustee to pick up the county share. So.
Do, if I picture this right, the township's been taking responsibility of maintenance for a good number of years, and like in a real estate transaction, if somebody uses a drive for so much to access his property that goes through another property.
Adverse possession, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, like over a good number of years, Ken.
The problem with that is that if you're talking about public property, then it's not possible to adversely possess public property. I mean, as a member of the public, anybody can go there.
I'm just trying to see if there's a tracker, if that tracker could mean anything.
I don't know that it means anything, I'm just saying it, it, it may not be fair to Lancaster Township to say, because two county-owned cemeteries are in your township, that this is not your problem rather than the county. I mean, statute says, and again, the, the statute wasn't, uh, wasn't part of the Cemetery Act, but rather, I think it was deeds to associations, you know, the county owns it in perpetuity. So, in, in my opinion, uh, it's, it's the county's responsibility unless somehow you can, um.
Unless they want to accept.
Convince Lancaster Township to, to take it. But, you know, it's, it's still a matter of who's gonna set the tax base, and, and the county would have a better tax base and, and, than just the residents of Lancaster Township.
So, how do we calculate that?
Sorry?
How would we calculate a tax base? Is that something?
Well, I think you'd have to figure out what the cost is going to be to do that.
We just need to do some research on it.
Well, we, we do have, uh, you know, we do have some township trustees who have, have you paid for the mowing of both Murray and, and the Old Bluffton Cemetery?
Right, and great though.
So, so we, we know some costs.
Or would it make sense for us to hire them?
Well, that, that might be. All I know is that the statute with respect to care of cemeteries by counties says that you can appoint a cemetery commission.
But I mean, not necessarily appointing a commission, but just contracting them. Since he's already doing it, can we just put my letting them?
Well, the, the commission may well decide what's the best way to do that, and, and if, if they want to, um, recommend that Lancaster Township trustee, uh, contract to the, for the mowing.
I'd like this really to see that everything is unified out within the county, that all township would be treated equally, so there's not that one particular, like this, two, two cemeteries in the county are handled differently than what we do in any other public cemetery in the county, so, is it advantageous, like this particular claim maybe can be handled specifically through the county and the commissioners, but then have the ownership released from the commissioners and transferred back to the township, with the understanding that it's gonna be their responsibility from henceforth?
Be the responsibility of township.
Of the township. Is that possible?
I'd have to look and see, I mean, when the statute says the county owns it in perpetuity, I, I mean, I, I know there's a statute where the, where the county, and it's probably even also in the township, that, that you can, uh, convey it to a not-for-profit organization, so that's not the township trustee.
He's not for profit.
Well, let's keep investigating, I guess, at this point in time, I guess. Say something?
Yes, absolutely, Ken.
I think the big issue is, like vandalism, like 15 and the larger, money, like before children, so, we're not real glad I won't hedge on the insurance, but.
Yeah, we'll have to wait till they give us an answer on that, I would assume, if we're covered.
We have in our budget for 2016 to keep them mowed, try to keep the brush down and that sort of thing, but we have no money budget at all for any kind of damage or anything like that. As far as liability, I guess the county's insurance policy cover liability, I'll have to be able to.
That's a good question.
I don't know. Does your, your policy specifically have anything with liability?
I'm sorry?
Does your township policy have any? You're also carrying the township insurance?
No, no.
They don't have this endorsement?
No, no, it's all a different company.
But does this endorsement cover accidents that would happen there, if somebody would get hurt?
Pardon?
This says it will pay for the damage, but it doesn't say that it would pay for somebody if they twisted their ankle in a hole.
And again, I think that, that assumption or opinion would be that of the legal nature, based on what Mr. Johnson's telling me.
Well, liability for, for a county employee or contractor would be covered in a different coverage than a schedule for cemeteries and grave markers.
Sure.
So.
But, but in reference to, uh, uh, an injury perhaps occurring out there, where you had a large tree fall on a car or something of that nature, if.
Or people going out to the cemetery and twisting an ankle on a.
Right, right.
Sunken grave or whatever.
If it's, if it's indeed the county's responsibility, then our liability would pick that up. But I'm more concerned that if, if we are responsible for those, I need to know the number and approximate legal location and who adverses the policy to comply with.
Well, it looks like this, we'd need to add the legal description for the.
Yes.
For the county cemeteries that we.
Thank you, it happens tomorrow.
That the county owns.
Now, whether they would make a charge or not, I don't know, it's based on usually the acreage size, most general liability is based on that. But my only, my only experience with the cemetery is the Markham Cemetery Association, which I've had for years, but that is a not-for-profit that charges for the lots, they do the maintenance, take donations and so forth. So, the only thing I, I guess the question I have to you, as, as the commissioners, want me to present a claim to the insurance company.
Do you have estimates, Ken? Or how soon, I mean, weather conducive, if you don't, how soon would we have estimates?
As far as?
Uprising the stones, it's.
The what?
Fixing the vandalism, do you have a cost estimate on fixing the vandalism?
This talk to, uh, a firm out of Connersville, they were down at the Township Association as well, and I said, a little bit, talked to him, he's saying, depending on the base, whether the base, some of the bases are a little bit sunk or whatever, he's thinking he can do the tombstone, getting them back up for about a hundred dollars. He said that's a rough estimate.
It's cheap.
We're supposed to meet.
Hundred dollars each?
Total?
I'm sorry?
Hundred dollars each?
Yes.
So, and you said there's 15?
Roughly 15.
So, 1,500 dollars.
So, uh.
I mean, we could get ahold of Tomas, and we could get ahold of Goodwin's, and ask him if they have a service that does that kind of work.
Yes, all over, I mean, yes.
So, let's.
All time employees.
Why don't we make contact with Goodwin's and Tomas, and have two local ones give us an estimate, and then, uh, we can put it together? But I would keep you on notice that, yeah, we probably would have something to present.
Okay. Then, then I do have a consensus to present a claim?
Yes.
Yes. And we need to get you the legal for the two county-owned cemeteries.
We run into this situation, how often does a aerial tower, a repeater cemetery have a designated mailing address? So, it's section so-and-so range so-and-so, that's the only description that we basically need, and it could be an error, and we, as long as the intent was there, still gonna honor the claim. So, I would, I, if I know at least the section, the range, the township, you know, quarter of an acre, half an acre, five acres, or whatever, at least we've made an attempt to address whatever issue that may occur as far as advising insurance.
I mean, if locally, we can get it done for 500 bucks, I mean, our deductible is 250 dollars, and maybe I'd pay a few hundred dollars. Let's get the estimates first before we'll put you on notice that we do want to file a claim in the event.
But do we need to see about the liability, or that's automatically covered because we own it?
Liability for.
A twisted ankle, a.
I, I think that, that would be under the general liability for county-owned property, right?
Yes, that is correct.
And then if these cemeteries are county-owned property, then it's covered.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
For, for the general liability, do you need to have legal description, or just, it's good enough that the county owns it, that we're covered?
I would like to have legal, at least I've demonstrated an attempt to notify the county of those, of those locations.
And, and I, I mean, I've probably already got that from what Ken provided, we have the legals.
But my question to you, are, are there other cemeteries within the county?
We don't know.
We don't know?
Okay.
Hope not. Thanks, Richard.
I think I'll join Meyer Channel.
Thank you.
See ya.
Jake, thanks. Oh, goodness.
Oh, talk about the dead.
Musler reports, Ben.
Okay, the two things, I have two things. First off, I do have the total compensation for 2015 that is to be permitted, presented to the commissioners, um, second meeting, and. second meeting in January of each year, and it's a total compensation that's also going to be advertised in the news banner this week, and it will be posted in two or three locations throughout the county. But it is the total compensation paid for all employees for the county for the year of 2015. The total was $5,232,061.28. So that was just being presented if you want to initial that.
With no increase to the county commissioners?
That's correct.
For the second year in a row?
That's correct.
That's what I thought, okay. Just wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
And the other thing I had was the appointment for the alcohol beverage board. I think that we did have someone come forward on that, and if you are interested. I didn't have any other people come forward. Mr. Walters said that he was not interested. I think I forwarded it to you, so you're interested in that.
I would make a motion to appoint Rob Moon to that position.
I'll send it.
Ballot favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thanks to Rob for putting his name out there.
Robin. Don't make mistakes. It's all in change in the year.
Yep.
Thank you.
After some years.
That's all right.
That's all I have.
Anything else, Rob? Got certified letters that sort of showed up?
Got a check for '17 and a release agreement to be signed by, I guess, the president of the drainage board. Motion approved of accepting the check for Roy's opinion of the letter and allow Blake to sign that.
Consensus?
This media-
$17,000, you own the drainage board for their-
Should I put that in our minutes this minute, or?
Sorry?
Should that go in the commissioners' minutes or the drainage?
Drainage board.
So we don't need that motion?
Okay.
You've approved the settlement already.
We approved it in the drainage board pending that we see.
Fine, fine.
You can check out if you want.
What are you talking about?
Come on, Beth.
I knew that there was stuff going on with media comment.
This work was done, I believe, last April.
I did know that there was.
And they knew their damage and took them out to get it done, so.
Saved them $400, so. I need you guys to sign a CD.
Underneath where we are? Can you make sure Diana or Derek get that?
I need the settlement, the stipulation for dismissal.
Do you just want me to take the check?
You can have the check. I need the-
Oh!
Just rip it.
What check?
I forgot. I need the second, I need the cover letter, and then the stipulation for dismissal filed with the court.
I'll just take the check.
Okay.
We can get whatever bounce back to them if they need copies. Thank you.
Do we find out anything more about the felon stuff, or are we talking about the letter?
That was it?
The county felon.
What did you decide about this cemetery?
That was supposed to have gone to-
I'm saying it's a discussion, I don't think about it.
I think so, but, yeah. We're gonna discuss the cemetery management stuff next meeting.
Okay.
Agreed.
Jessica?
That's more, it's not with that stuff.
Do you have anything else, Beth?
No, that's it.
I have nothing.
Yes, audience?
I have a couple of comments, though, I mean.
Sure.
First of all, truly do appreciate what you guys do, common sense and better judgment that you've shown in showing. We've heard a lot of things discussed here about we wanna join this, we wanna join that. We're told about fire refractions, that you have to do this, but you haven't funded. It seems like concerning Mike's request for this permitting the excellence coalition, it seems to me like we're becoming part of a bureaucratic grid when we just keep wanting to go outside. It seems to be that things that are currently being done appear to be working. These guys are performing their jobs, you know, very efficiently and with significant confidence. And so I defer to your, once again, common sense and better judgment before we started tangling ourselves in these coalitions where it might influence in our economy to make those decisions locally may be impacted. And I just prefer not to, not to be giving that autonomy over to the bureaucracy that's already inverting significantly. Second thing, the TIF districts that we've heard about, we just had one passed, Chad, you probably are aware of this, there seems to be significant, significant negative blowback on those in certain areas, and I just wonder where it comes in. You don't have to answer this now, but, you know, is it really beneficial for us to have the TIF districts, and at what value are they bringing to us, and in what timeframe? You don't have to answer that, man. I'll be back at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you, and we truly appreciate the common sense and better judgment that you guys are using. It's been long needed in this county, and we appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack, appreciate that.
And bless you.
Any other comments?
I'll entertain a motion, Dick.
So moved.
Thank you, appreciate it.